On the agenda. Um, so let's see. Does everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes? I'm motion to approve the minutes.
There was some minor typos and changes that he did make for these requests.
Typos. Okay. Motion, I'll move them.
Is they done on felt wire, like the landscape plan?
Yes, that one you sent it, yes.
That was the one that was, yeah.
Yeah, we got it, thank you.
At first, second, Kathy, go on favor. Great. Um, let's see, uh, two work sessions. You all having Donalds this week or in schedule with the next? Not yet. Okay. All right, we're gonna need to file reviews first up, Fulton.
Yeah. Mike LaSalle is on Zoom if you want to give any kind of an overview.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, we reviewed it.
Who was talking, if I can?
It was Mike LaSalle from MBL Engineering is on Zoom.
Yep.
And whatever is easier, if it's easier for me to share my screen to go through the changes and based on the the comment letter, we can do so.
I think it's a thing, just things. Yes, yeah, if you could share, Mike, Mike, what do you go ahead and share?
Uh, it's gotta be turned on still, it doesn't allow me yet. Right, I think the the host has to allow screen sharing.
You gotta allow.
I think she has to stop.
Close that screen. A little, I'll bear on next to share, allow participants to share.
Okay, thank you, again. So, everybody okay and can see the screen?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, so we'll, quick, real high level overview based on the comment letter from May 29. Um, the the major changes included adding an additional screen wall for the larger dumpster roll-off containers. Uh, we originally just added it for the two smaller trash containers, but since we've added it in this whole area, so we have the wall that now sits here. They really block the view from four eighty-one. The reason why it doesn't fully include it is how the trucks, fork trucks have to access the dumpsters, because they do have to access on the sides of them to put the the waste metal and such in there. Uh, so that was one of the major ones. Um, the other one is between the major existing mature trees, we've added.
Michael, just to allow us to see a little better, could you minimize the notes to the right, just so it zooms in a bit? Or else just zoom in, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, that's great.
Yeah, so we, um, like we said, we were, we did, I'm just circling the mature trees just to give everybody a, just so it's a little easier to see. These are the existing mature trees that are there eighteen inch or so. Um, and we've, we've infilled without being within the canopy with some, some random trees that are, that are specified um, in between everything. And I think this, this view kind of gives you a good feel. This is on forty-one, one of the first few, you can see it's obviously not seeing much, but as you move down, um, these trees had some gaps. So this is, again, I'm a little higher than a, than a car here, um, so it's a little bit, uh, looking down at the site, but it gives you a feel of these existing trees here that we're trying to infill in between. Um, each one of these trees sets were infilling in. So that was what we're doing here, which was a major change. Then another change was we, we did grading of the swell and now we pulled it away from. So we're now not touching any contour within that canopy here and where this contour is riding right on the existing contour tying off. So no touching of grade there. Well, that's existing tree, but we're not touching the grade here on this tree. Um, and so on, we're tying up here to this grade. So we are protecting that root zone of those existing trees by shifting that swell tighter to the, uh, tighter to the, the paved line with, with no issues with the existing sewer line. That has been added to our plan, has significant cover through there. Uh, so that worked out well. And then the final major change was this, we did show this as a riprap line swell. We have changed that to do a revegetation of P three hundred revegetation fabric. And that's where that half zone would be where you would roll out the revegetation fabric to stabilize that swell quickly uh, and, and also long term to provide a little better stabilization for that. So that was the, the major changes. There was lighting changes, um, I'll spend this for a second. Changing the intensities of some of these, these lights that were previously shown on the front of the building. Updating this chart with our, with our average in our maxes, uh, in our min-max ratios uh, to meet the requirements that were kind of specified. So I believe we, we hit those numbers. So I think that was the major items, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions.
Any, uh, just some questions for the board? Propose a resolution then? For Fulton, this is a motion to approve the site plan submitted last dated six twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four with the following findings and conditions. Our findings, a short form EAF submitted by the applicant dated five seven twenty twenty-four has been reviewed by this board. This is an unlisted action under secret. And the board issues a negative declaration on the same. Matter is exempt from the county county planning board review. With conditions, and adding one condition here, if anybody has any comment on it, but no outside storage of materials or equipment on site. You know, we don't allow for storage outside of the building. So that back, you know, you have a loading area, lay down area for loading trucks, but we're not storing materials or equipment out back.
Right, yeah, understood, I think they use it kind of the outline, uh, even the photos I took that day. They set their big steel plates in there when they come off. And now it's not instantly go in the building, but they understand that it can't be any kind of a more than a short term.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a day or two here while you're moving stuff around, getting it like, that's not an issue, but there's no long term storage.
Okay.
That's, that's a condition. And then, a little presented as a modification to the existing site plan. For all purposes, the site plan as shown and approved here and is considered the final site plan for the entirety of this project. As it exists on the site plan that's approved, including the number of parking spaces that are on. This approval is made with the condition, but this approval is for plans, other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson. Signed by the planning board chairperson. Any applicant requires that all the work shown be completed by the applicant or her force, whichever document. See more compliance to be issued and propose changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved. Are subject to further site plan review, so down to the white code, section one ninety-two. Kathy, second, please second, I'll be favor. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Verizon, Representative Verizon.
I'm here, Jared Luskin, I'm Morrison.
All right, this is a fairly easy, straightforward. We'll review this material, I think the applicant has completed everything, last thing to complete on this one. Board is adding, very time to review all the materials. Are there any additional questions on this one? I'm going to propose a resolution then, unless you have any additional comments or concerns.
I don't.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve the site plan last dated four nineteen, twenty twenty-four for the installation of new cellular antenna on top or on an existing rooftop with the following findings and conditions. The applicant has worked with this board to present a plan for the use which is reasonably compatible with the adjacent areas respective to, respective to U shed. The applicant was granted a specific use permit by the zoning board of appeals as required by the code on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. A short form EAF submitted by the applicant dated seven eighteen, twenty twenty-three has been reviewed by this board. This is an unlisted action for uncoordinated review under secret. And the board issues a negative declaration on the same. Matter is exempt from the county county planning board review. Conditions, all requirements of the specific use permit must be complied with. This approval is made with the condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents. Site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant requires that all the work shown be completed by the applicant or her certificate of occupancy on the class issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the time code, under the white code, section one ninety-two, that's one point two. Motion for approval. Joe, Jenny, on the favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, your evening.
You too. Yeah. Um, let's see, we have Nottingham subdivision.
Nottingham subdivision.
Steve.
Steve.
Hi, welcome. Starting right into it.
What's that?
Starting right into it.
Alright, good.
Um, so we've worked through subdivision plans with you guys. I don't think there are any further comments, questions on this one. I will offer a presentation. Go ahead. All right, motion to approve the subdivision plan dated six thirteen, twenty twenty-four as presented with the following findings and conditions. This is a simple subdivision of land under the code and no new lots are created. This involves movement of lot lines.
Interior.
Interior lot lines. The four lots here are consolidated, are consolidated, two are a reasonable re-subdivision of the property with a larger lot number two now is the site of all improvements utilized for the premises at eleven seventy-six Ninety Fifth Road. Additionally, the house at eleven fifty is now on a lot with substantially more road frontage. Distance between the side lot line and the house at eleven fifty is existing non-conforming and no greater, and non-conformity and no greater non-conformity related by a re-subdivision of land. Ordinarily, in the light of the above, this board awaits public hearing, waits the public hearing requirement for subdivision as permitted by the code where there are no new lots created and there is no public interest in this lot line adjustment. This board has reviewed the Saco Resolution of two twenty-six twenty, which found no significant adverse.
Sorry, that, that was, this was exempt.
Was exempt.
Yes.
So this is a, uh, project, a building.
Yeah, it's exempt.
By the county planning board.
Correct.
Uh, applicant was filed subdivision map with the county county clerk's office in accordance with rules. So by the county provided common same file, town, to let.
It is a, it is a negative, so.
So number four, this board has also reviewed EAF submitted in the applicant. It issues a negative secret declaration for the project finding no significant adverse. This approval is made with the condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents and documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant. Requires all the work shown, shall be completed by the applicant or her certificate of occupancy on the class issued. Any changes, additions, or conditions to the scope of work, materials from the site and documents are subject to further section. Two.
Did resolve it. Yeah, I talked to the surveyor, we were able to understand what each on the survey a little bit better and, and the exact dates that those improvements were out there and, and by this report. Yeah, good question.
Yeah, the questions, comments, motion to approve, Joe, Kevin, second, favor? Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get the, should we get the, uh, fly, the sign?
Can we grab something tomorrow, because we already turned it into the city for three months.
Uh, I thought, um, your attorney was waiting to get them, he stamped today, that's people, you know, you have them?
No.
Okay, so you have to get them, three years against me.
From you, whatever you have to him. He said for me, grab something from you guys.
Okay, so I'll talk to him.
Okay, perfect.
And I will, I will get them, sorry.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, JD Little League.
I think we skipped, I think we really did try.
We're in, we're in circle back.
Oh, we were trying to, oh, it's a, yeah.
Willand or JD Little League, welcome. Your name?
My name is Matthew Doran, I'm one of the board members for JD Little League. Actually, I thought Brian Hanson was going to be here.
He is.
We're up, yep.
Alright, we'll do a quick presentation on this one today. If you can look at this, we reviewed this, we were holding tech on the floor this evening.
Okay.
Uh, however, we have not received tech resolution. Can't do anything in this particular meeting, but as soon as we receive it, we'll get it. Uh, I'd ask if you want to do kind of a quick update to us and just like.
Sure, so the, uh, JD, we should expand the concessions then, we should see right down here. Around a hundred forty-three square feet, you want to expand that in something, so bringing us to a little bit over three hundred square feet. Reason for the addition is really to provide restrooms of a facility and also a small, a small space. That's it, I would expand the concessions, so I think, yeah, not, we're not doing any of that, so.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. Um, I know we're looking at this one particular lot in here, we've asked, you know, for future, not right now, but we remove the rest of the secondary lot that's up there.
Okay.
He goes, same, he keeps getting cut off, we ask for one, the other one gets cut off, we'd like to show that whole thing since the expansion. So, future. Other than that, sorry, we thought we were gonna be able to move ahead here tonight, but we gotta wait on county first, so. Any idea, any idea, um, so.
Your next date is July tenth.
So, we're gonna be.
Today is twenty. Or not, no, July.
No, eleven, eleven.
Yeah.
Yep, should we return that or? You, you wouldn't need to, we don't need to, I mean, you're more of a welcome to Doran's if you like, but you know, we'll just do a straight resolution and move it forward. Alright, that sounds good, okay, thanks, appreciate it.
You can always log on to Brian if there's any questions or comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, let's circle back here to what landing? Yeah, I think we're gonna, this is another one that we've done extensive coordination with you, first team. I think we just kind of get, you know, data. Jurisdiction. All that stuff, we'll kind of, we'll move through it pretty quick here.
So, I think several months ago, we were fairly far along in the review. Both of the elevations in the site plan and then general concurrence with all the materials and work. At that time, there was a secret process, a letter from the DEC and some questioning about the extent of the wetlands on the delineation we had for the property, um, and both by the Core and the DEC. Of course, we had to wait for grounding season in order to get back out there. We have three site visits with the Core, two with the DEC. Uh, we've come to final jurisdictional determinations from both agencies. Essentially, the DEC is, has taken no jurisdiction over anything inside the hander step loop. The Core has taken jurisdiction both inside and outside. So we have agreed on a mitigation plan for both the DEC and the Core. What the Core calls a ditch, the DEC calls a wetland, what some ditches are federal, some are in men. It's been a semantics with what's an excrepital swell. But we've, we've come to agreement, the determinations have been made, a joint permit application was filed. One deemed a complete June eighteenth, one deemed a complete twentieth. So they're both into inter-agency comment periods. Um, some public notices went out to the adjacent property owners. I contacted both agencies this morning, there's been no comments on either. So we expect that we're on the right path. I think the board's concern was that there would be more wetland that we could mitigate on site, particularly with the DEC. Mitigation, there's an actual plan that was in the joint permit that was reviewed by the ecologists and accepted. We're going to add point three three acres of wetland outside the loop. It's an expansion of Wetland eight, which is both jurisdictional by the Core and by the DEC. So we will add point three three acres of wetland to that emergent marsh, which is what the Core, there's point nine acres of impact that we have, uh, in lieu credits from Ducks Unlimited available to us. And we expect that those credits will be paid for once we get their final permit. It's a letter of permission permit, um, from the Core. I think we have permits in hand by the end of July. So, it's been a long process for it, it is agreed, so.
Mark, do you, uh, Mark Parrish, or? Mark, do you have any questions or comments on that statement?
No, I don't, I think, uh, you know, they've done their due diligence and, um, are far along in the process. And at this point, it's just somewhat administrative.
So does that mean that the wetland expands, wetland expansion is documented on the site lands that are part of this application?
Yeah, so in the civil set, the six twelve civil set that was submitted, there are two new sheets, but there's actually three new sheets. There's a demolition and tree removal plan, and then there's a plan for the DEC wetlands and a plan eight oh one and eight oh two are the two plans that address the wetlands. What gets impacted, what two planes, and what, there were a significant amount of wetlands that were determined to be non-jurisdictional because they were isolated. Most, all of these wetlands were low quality and man-made, but still they qualified as wetlands. So this is the DEC, Wetland eight is a point four two acre. We added, this will be another, it'll be an expansion of Wetland eight and connect to this ditch. It's a ditch by Core jurisdiction, it's a wetland by DEC jurisdiction. DEC took jurisdiction over this little piece, which we're mitigating with, again, up here. The Core took jurisdiction over these green areas. But again, we're mitigating those within the credits, Wetland seven. You know, you can make the case that this stormwater pad, which has been really made much more attractive by this whole process, you know, wraps around Wetland eight and it kind of to not impact. So this is a, this is a plan that's in our joint permit application for both the DEC and for the Core and has been accepted.
I've taken that median and never tried out, tried out.
Sure, so one new change is, um, James Fenskin from Adidaw County DOT in the process of the county planning review, basically said that signs and medians are not something the county likes to see at entrances to their roads. So the current plan shows this median being demolished, I think Rocco County has been contacted and he's in agreement. We are not sure if they wanted, they want us to just re-stripe where the median was or put lane striping. Right now, it's two lanes out onto Fly, one lane in onto Fly. We'll go through whatever the, the team wants us to do.
I just want to make sure I update on the C A, what is that, last day?
Should be this day, should be this six twelve. They're outdated six twelve.
Any other questions, all those concerns?
I think there was some discussion of lighting control.
Certainly, you commented on it and then you missed it.
Yeah, we can, we can set whatever duration that it lasts and what it sets back.
I agree, after ten PM, it goes down fifty percent on site. And then when motion kicks it up, it lasts five minutes.
It lasts whatever.
The one with five minutes after ten PM and then it goes back down to fifty percent.
I don't, did you make application to the CVA on the sign?
No, I, I haven't filled out, I can submit, I thought I needed to have site plan approval or recommendation from the planning board.
Well, go, go ahead and make your application and as we can make your recommendation, we'll do it this time or we do it next time.
Whatever sign you made by.
No, it's the sign of the building.
Yeah, it would kind of, it's a size, that's size, it was.
Well, that's.
Right to proportion, if one is the location and size, and one is size.
Yeah.
I wrote, so that one's a good, we're intent on the size, so.
So if you can go ahead and make that application and once you make the application, we'll just bring it up at another meeting, so you can get that recommendation.
I think they're special use permits, they, they want to be a.
What's the, the special use permits?
For the signs, for the size.
No.
It's just a sign.
It's a variance.
Good, okay, we have a long resolution, so. Alright. Alright, motion to approve the site plan last dated six twelve, twenty twenty-four, including building renderings last dated six twelve, twenty twenty-four, which includes all drawings to be stamped by the chairperson of this board as part of the site plan with the following findings and conditions. The site plan of removed area includes the following site plan drawings by C H A P six twelve four, C zero zero one to C zero zero four, C one hundred to C one two, C two oh one to C two oh two, C three oh one, C four oh one to C four oh three, C five oh one to C five oh two, C six oh one to C six oh seven, C seven hundred, C eight hundred, C eight oh one, and building records expected to be in six twelve, twenty twenty-four. Lighting cut sheets last dated eleven, twenty twenty-four. Vehicle charging specs dated six thirteen. What landing, applicant submitted, the second application with the complete documents, project has a request, but the new construction of a two hundred and forty thousand square foot building will find parcel plan. Proposed use was a high-tech manufacturing office facility with the, with the expected four hundred employees. Within five years, construction includes a parking lot, truck loading area, landscaping, utilities, and solar power control areas. Support has worked with the applicant for various agencies over several months. Time to review the project to make sure we make such changes, modifications, and hazards. Time to review the project to make sure we make such changes, modifications as are necessary and desirable. For this large project and high-tech zoning district town, qualifications and conditions. As have been recommended by the town engineer, planning board engineer, D E C, county of Anadog, planning board, East Syracuse Fire Department, county department of water, department of transportation, and others. Corporation of this project final plans. Public hearing for seekers. Site plan subdivision related to this project was held on March fourteen twenty twenty four. Closed on March twenty eighth twenty twenty four. There was no active public interest in the project. The project, including subdivision portion of the project, include full secret review for technical action by site management project. Subdivision. Secret decision was approved on April ninth twenty twenty four. Secret decision dated April ninth twenty twenty four is incorporated in this resolution by reference herein and all findings and conditions therein. On April twenty fifth twenty twenty four, this board approved subdivision of the project with line, which combined four tax map parcels in support. All findings and conditions of subdivision resolution being able to support to be more incorporated by reference herein. This board has reviewed the undocumented county plan referral dated on site plan. February fourteen twenty twenty four, which offers obligations which are incorporated as conditions of this resolution. Conditions being the vulnerability conditions that must be met as part of the site plan approval. As perceived the resolution of the April ninth twenty twenty four. Should the wetland delineations be determined to be greater than is currently presented, the plans for development can and will be required to be recently configured to mitigate any potential negative impacts on the wetlands. The applicant must obtain and comply with the conditions of the permits of the New York State Department of Conservation and the United States Army Corps of Engineers for wetlands. No approval for signs given at this time and varies are required. The applicant should return for final approval signs upon obtaining the need and variances from the C B A. The applicant must comply with the requirements the East Syracuse Fire Department purged June twenty sixth twenty twenty four. Correspondence with the number of hydrants required further coordinating with the town of Duett Water Department to have the hydrants installed. Subject to further requirements of the town labor engineer is released to SWIP related matters will may occur on site construction. The controls dim lighting to fifty percent intensity shall activate as of ten P M each evening. Motion sensor shall turn off in five minutes. The last detective motion of all conditions subdivision approval resolution date. Or must be complied with and specifically limited to the condition relating to release, utility easement inside Cameron Drive and the conditions of the state. Where the Anadog County Referral on February fourteenth twenty twenty four, the following are also conditions of disapproval. The applicant must continue to coordinate fly road access plans with the Anadog County Department of Transportation to further meet department requirements. The applicant must submit a copy of the storm work. Storm work, lucid prevention plan, SWIP, lighted plan to the department for immediate municipality must ensure any mitigation as being determined by department reflected on the project plans prior to the rest of the condition of disapproval. The Anadog County Department of Transportation has determined that the applicant must complete a traffic impact study. The gap analysis at A M and E M Howard will build out to meet department requirements. T I S must must take the traffic generation data from currently proposed large scale projects along the white road. T T M Industries, on X one, that was a person. The applicant is required to first contact the department to determine the scope of study to the municipality must ensure any mitigation is being determined by the department reflected on the project plans prior to the rest of the condition of disapproval. Project within the Anadog County Greenwich District that require storm work. Lucid prevention plan must get a copy to the Anadog County Department of Water, Environment, Protection, municipality must ensure any mitigation is being determined by the department reflected on the project plans prior to the rest of the condition of disapproval. This approval is made with the further condition of this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents assigned by the planning board chairperson. The applicant requires them all to show me completed by the applicant or certificate upon receiving or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions or relief lead to the scope of. Materials from the site plan. I approve your second for the site plan. And motion.
Those Anadog County.
Yeah.
They have to be in the resolution.
Yeah.
So SWIP, traffic study. A motion to approve. Second. Kathy, all favor? Thank you.
One other quick question. Lighting for the fly road facade took out those uplights because of the dark sky. Would like to come back and do some sort of illumination. We'll go through something.
Okay. All right, those are all of our. Um, so we'll go with Sicko. Representative for Sicko?
Yep.
So this is a concept right now.
Okay.
Generally.
Okay.
You're committed for this?
Okay.
Like, we'll start with that.
Yeah.
Show us which you got.
Yeah, so.
Let's have.
Yep.
Materials we have.
There are two separate locations that we're going to talk about, kind of talk about in conjunction. Get one is on Kirkville, one is on Erie Boulevard. Essentially, your proposal is to do the same thing in different locations.
Correct, yep.
So we'll talk about those are two applications in front of us. Really talking about one instead. So we're. Basically just rebranding the gas stations from Sinoco to Sicko Fuel. But that's, it's going to be the canopy of the. So Squirtoratella, stuff saying the same. We want to propose option three, which is this one up on the screen. Basically, Sicko has come up with a new illuminated image that they require all their stations to do. It's changed a few times in the last few years. And this is their new image. We understand that the town of Duett doesn't want signage Sicko, tri mark and letters on the canopy. But we would like to at least put the colors on the canopy if we can. Right now, we're just going to sell it blue versus Sinoco. Yeah, there's just A C M panels. And I didn't include the wick flow across the street from Kirkville, but that has three colors in the canopy right now. It's got green, white and yellow. So it'd be very similar to that. It's their newest image, it's a really nice image. But if not, then we would propose option one, which is all red. Which is that one right there, yeah. And this is the current canopy we have, which is blue and it's the same exact color at our Duett location on Erie Boulevard.
All right, so when we talk about these, the town does have, at a language narrative, have a single color on the canopy. They do have an image here of Speedway.
Yep, and that's, that's another example that's right next to our Erie Boulevard location.
Right.
And they have a couple of colors on theirs as well.
Which has a couple of colors on it.
It doesn't have a Speedway name, which is why we took the Sicko name off ours.
Yeah. It has, wouldn't have the sign on there.
Yeah.
So I want to open up the conversation real quick in terms of color, what people's thoughts, you know, multi-color, single color. You do have architectural. Oversight. Option three.
I like.
I like free.
Yeah, I did say free. I like free. Are there horizontal lines similar to this picture, but I think this is a different.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's going to look exactly like option three, there's no horizontal on it.
There's no, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to confirm that it just wasn't showing.
They come in sections, they're called A C Ms. You can kind of see.
A C Ms, like A like apple?
Yes. They're like, they're panels, they go right on and they're already painted.
So the point about a Sicko color is the sign guidelines. Not sure if it's where exactly. If a sign of gas out of a canopy shall be a Sicko color, there's protection. Any logo or lettering shall match the balance of the sign. So I think it gives something. Gives a signal. This is better than a Sicko color. Is it great? To option three. What are the colors to the, to the building itself?
Uh, it's a brick building has a, I don't have to pick a.
Like a brick building.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
It's, it's red brick below with plankboard, it's got a real hometown look, that's old town accent, sexy, well, the personalities.
We have silver around the window sills. Yeah.
Yeah, it's real nice house look with our buildings.
Yeah.
Red, white, brown color on the plankboard.
Yeah.
Red brick below.
So. Does anyone have any objection to this whole right now?
I like, I like.
In term, you are replacing the pumps too, you said, right?
So it's, uh, they have a Sinoco and it's just a Sicko panel, it's going to go on and then the same thing on top.
Okay, it's just, it's just the, the color problem.
The in kind.
Yeah.
In kinds, right, we're not adding lights, no music and screens, no.
Yes. It's going to look exactly like this right here, yeah. It's kind of boring, but.
So. Music's in music. We have, we have the dates on there submission.
Maybe have to resubmit without the option three and only one item. Do you want it bad, like send you.
We can, yeah, we can make the motion now except option three. And then you can just.
Delete the other options.
Delete the other options. Submit a file package to the office here.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to compare a little bit on this one here, but. We have the date, so it's six twenty five.
Yeah, that was the plan that you guys agreed on was in their original submission from the Corps. They did also submit to a conference.
Is that the date?
We, we, we did, yeah, we, we submitted option three first and then I got a call saying submit, submit the solid red just in case it doesn't, so that way we could get it removed. So option, option three was originally submitted by itself.
So what I'm, what I'm going to suggest is that you resubmit with today's date.
Okay.
Today, the date that you will resubmit on the drawings will be today's date.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're going to bring my name from the guidelines to give it some context, whatever reason.
See, everybody's shooting them.
All right, I got lots of paper in front of me. Here we go.
So.
Why don't we have to make here ten minutes?
We have a date on the.
So I guess we'll go into separate resolutions along with the, um, the. You want to sell Sicko Kirkville first?
Yep. I read it once. Quite well. Anybody on the board that's probably reading it once?
That would be wonderful.
Uh, motion to approve the site plan submission last dated six twenty seven twenty twenty four. Following the findings, conditions, short form, E A F submitted by the applicant. Date there has been reviewed by this board, listed action on secret or issued a negative declaration the same. Matters is down from on the back. View. Uh, conditions, though this, although the.
Probably that it's going to be option three.
It's a mixed thing.
Yeah, definitely. So under the conditions, uh, though the option three, which is for, except for though the option. Though the option three has three colors pattern, this is going to be appropriate and this board approves of such. This approval is made to be conditions, this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, segment documents designed by the planning board chairperson. The applicant requires that all of our show me completed by the applicant. Were stood, protected, documents, or compliance to issue any changes, additions, or limitations. To scope of our materials from the segment documents.
Send it to a final.
Yep. Any other comments?
Looking for deviating one color, but is it the future or?
Well, that's why, that's why I brought it up. Could we say something like the color deviation is harmonized with the building architecture? That's one of the reasons why we're doing this.
Yeah.
Just so it's clear going forward down the road.
Right. Well, and that's, that's what we looked at and talked about, was that it's appropriate for this site, for this building. If it was, was the building. Materials. We have a motion to approve. Kathy, Kevin, all favor? All right, now we'll also talk. I just ran Sicko here, hold on. Kevin Moos, second. Dave, all favor? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
All right, next up we have Bull and Bear. All right, Sam, you have Bull and Bear looking for expansion of patio space.
Yes, so it's part of its existing. Yeah, it's part of its existing patio. Um, and then there's some wrapping around the building that's kind of used as storage dumpsters and stuff. We're going to claim that and turn that into a kind of a turfed area. You know, up the floor and all, something like that. So it currently, there's currently covered, that's, that's all existing. There's currently patio here. We're looking to just really pop it. Right, right now, there's no good landscaping, some fences starting to fall apart. So the plan is to make it a brick curved wall, a low decorative lighting on it, not really lighting the area. Couple of fire pits and some tables up there.
Extension right out of the wall. And then going back. The wall right up there, go back to the dumpster area, some sort of storage.
Right, so it currently kind of runs back this way, so we're just going to capture a little bit more of that. We would, we're going to push it out into the parking a little bit and then turn this into a one-way path. And then one of the other things we're looking at, because this gets really wide and awkward. We're proposing to take this portion of the pavement out and turn it into lawn area with some sidewalk. Just kind of rotate the parking down, yeah.
Kind of works. Makes more sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, so.
And that's it.
So Eric's done a really substantial review, I think. There's parking count issues that we need to work out.
Sure.
I know.
You wanna give the breakdown in terms of. So going off, I think you had fifteen hundred square feet approximately basketball proved in that rendering picture there. Uh so that's gonna be considered restaurant space. So at sixteen or.
I've never had you guys calculate exterior or.
And the patio space does get counted, you know, for occupancy and parking. So depending on how much of that will be replaced, that'll be up to twenty five spaces on top of the hundred.
So it's existing right now, right, we've got an existing patio out there.
So you'll need to show. Well, I think we have a need here to break down.
And I think the only expanded area really is not, it's the cornhole area, right, it's that that astroturf area, we're not looking at more seating in those spaces.
Yeah, I mean until you tear up the the grass and patio and put tables down, it's gonna be like cornhole. We have to look at it as that expanded space that has to be accounted for, getting out there.
No, I. Sure.
Uh I think the existing parking count was about two spot shorts. Right now.
Yeah.
So we wanna get a full parking summary on there.
There should be one on.
With all of the, well, with the patio spaces.
Yeah, I can get it.
With the patio, you know, update that one in there, um.
Can I pick up, so um do the prior plan, does it show patio? The one that that was um that was.
It doesn't show any in the calculation for parking at least, right, um. Doesn't really call out a patio, maybe it's plan. It says there's a cover, maybe it says covered patio area or covered porch, that would be the area like four. Right, not where this, not where both of the patio is, yep.
Are there any variances with the site plan of the original one? Are there approved variants?
So.
No, but.
No.
Oh, okay, I just wondered.
But so what we have does not show the patio.
It should. The previous approval that I put here for, not here, but but solving some problems that Mr. Bowles had. There was a patio shown in that area, it didn't, it didn't go.
Do you, do you have that?
I do, I can send it to you.
That would be great, because we don't, what we're looking at doesn't show it.
Sure.
Is it signed by Andy?
I don't know who signed it, I sat down, we sat down with Dale and worked it out. I've done.
So, yeah, that would be good, if you can show us what you have and, you know, the date on it. Um that would be helpful, we did not see that in the anything that was approved, running in the files, so.
Files. No, that's fine.
He's he's very surprised to hear that, they showed a bunch of that.
Is it, is the lot currently striped?
I don't think it got striped, it got repaved the other year.
It looks.
I thought it was striped, but.
It looks like just like one portion is striped, like maybe one side.
I think. I think just the front, front area.
So the whole demo need to be striped in there, then we're also looking at the site maneuvering, it does get a little tighter behind the building. Against parking configuration, we go back to the site plan. Yeah, so that's space that's right in there.
How wide is that?
Fourteen feet.
That separates the whole area from the drive aisle.
I believe the wall was back in that area.
So Eric, could you do the all of the gross square footage, short of spaces, is it? No, currently shown with this work footage based on what I've calculated, it's a number of spaces that are shown in there. Too short, not including patio space with space.
And how many um parking spaces does this new patio space take away?
Doesn't take away any.
Okay.
Doesn't take any, but.
So we're about twenty seven.
How many do you need for? So twenty five is, if it's full fifteen hundred square feet, it says that if you remove approximately fifteen hundred square feet of asphalt.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's fully being taken up by the patio.
Right, but there's too short now, would it be twenty seven or twenty five to double? Would we really be short if you?
It it may, honestly, there's a lot short right now, so it's gonna be twenty six.
Okay.
Are you planning on doing an attached sign?
There is, he's talked about it, but it's not part of this.
Attached what?
Attached sign, there is a total sign.
No, that's that was just, okay. So I didn't do the rendering, it was done by a landscape company, they put that up, that's not part of.
Is there upstairs in this building?
There is, it's office space.
Just there.
Office space for for the restaurant.
Was there a downstairs also?
Basement, no.
There is a second office.
It's got its different adros on this.
Yeah, it, I think it was just.
Let's put it this way, let's put it this way, we need to get a grip on what was approved last time, what was there.
I've got.
Yeah, what was on that plan. Um if it was office, what the count was, and then try to figure out you know, what what the count should be, um if everything was approved then we're stuck with that baseline problem.
I think there's some D O D issues.
Yeah, that was a while back, last time, last time they came in, yes, there was a problem. And the side.
I thought that was part of that approval. Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Yeah, so it's the left side where they went croach.
I think that may have been a couple approvals are back, I think that was what that came out from, so, yeah, I think that was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was a while back.
Right, they were back in the building, did the road there, it was no scene right on.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So when the county looks at this, they meet with state dudes, so we'll get in the comments.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think we basically just, I think patio looks beautiful, the whole space will be a lot of fun, it would be great to be outside, we just need to establish that baseline, figure out what's required.
An office space included in your parking count?
Yes.
How many parking spaces do you think you need?
Well, I've never seen it full, so I'd say less than what they have.
You've never seen it full? I only say it like that because when Google went by, it's heavens to be, I would say, half full at least.
It's up up front is always very good, but I don't think there's parking. The back area is never really that that's full.
I can put it there. Are the dump, are the dumpster facilities still stay where they are?
We're gonna shuffle them a little bit, but they're staying back behind the fence there.
That little annex that's kind of sticks out into the white space, so.
That's right here.
Yeah, that's. Is that other plans, do over the doors that are there?
I don't believe, I think it's, I think it's just a cool.
Yeah. These kind of stuff, right. So I think if we can establish that baseline, understand what is required or need, right, and uh make sure that the drawings are all make it correctly.
Was it right there?
That's all that, um.
Yeah, we we do not wanna see the rendering with the early on it in the final.
I can make sure that's gone for the next thing.
Yes, because it would.
It looks like the second floor is the wrong way. Yeah.
You said it forward way, it's not a major company.
Uh Ben, I'd like to get in for a warm session, just to figure out what baseline is.
Sure.
Figure it all out.
Yeah, who would I schedule that with?
Do you have the new survey? The one they have is from nineteen eighty four.
I think that's the newest surveys, yeah.
The one with the new survey, oh, like, like shaded.
Alright.
Could you zoom in on what that shaded area is on the top drive uh towards the road? Uh more towards, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the pavement was really wide.
And that it's striped.
But it's not striped right now.
Well, not only that, but the curve is steven, but it's just striped pavement line. Right for the.
Yeah, that was a previous.
So maybe. Well, I, I guess what I would say at the very least, if that was grandfathered in there, that the drive lane should actually have.
A curve.
It should have a curve.
Right, because the it's.
But we also don't allow for parallel parking, so we'd have to look and see what was approved.
Yeah.
And what was on the last group site plan. Those are not, so I'm assuming it's not grandfathered, right, I'm seeing.
Yeah.
Black is available.
Yeah, it is, cause you know if it's straight, people will park on it, right?
People park right here the whole time.
You know, it will, like, if there's not a rock, somebody's gonna park on it.
Any other questions?
I need to know.
No? I have updated stuff, got some, Kevin can get you in there.
Like it was.
Yeah.
Alright.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody was a taco park.
Alright, last up, Fisk Electrics. Not last, sorry. Um. Number nine, so before we start with Fisk Electrics, uh I need to just let everybody know that Fisk was just awarded electrical contract for um a Tonsalina Community Center, which I designed, they don't let me create it, it's not Salina, but I will have it around them. Any issues with that?
So it it's not an actual conflict, but it is um, you know, uh something that should be disclosed, so um does the applicant have a problem with the chair continuing?
This is Kevin.
No, I don't, I won't know.
I just have to discuss it, so.
Yeah, does does the board, is there anyone on the board who feels that this should um should be, should refuse himself or this?
No, I just don't sure, okay, thank you.
Right, thank you, alright. Give you about ten minutes worth of time, this is uh an update to kind of an old project, old site plan that we've worked out a long time for, right?
That with me. Uh this is pretty new for us. This on Badgley Road is an acre and a half site, fairly flat site, uh has all utilities. Uh Kevin Fisk wishes to have move the business and build this building and move into this. Um he's gonna have uh two thousand feet of office space in here, a thousand on the first floor, a thousand in the second. And then the rest of the building out here would be the warehouse and shop area. Uh we're conforming with all setbacks. And we've uh we've got a thirty two foot setback on the east side because we're complying with the one, the one-to-one rule with height with offset on the side. The building uh has uh, the parking calculation I did was for the two thousand feet of office space. And the rest of the building comes to like twenty eight spaces, so we have the the right amount of parking spaces there. Um Mark Parish just received about a week ago the the drainage report, so I haven't heard anything from him on that. But we would have a detention pond in the back here area for drainage. And uh it's it's fairly straightforward, uh it's just gonna have one sign over the entrance canopy on the front door coming in. Uh it's um it's a wood frame building with metal siding, metal roof. Um insulated, finished on the inside. It's it's basically it.
While we're talking about site, something is a little bit over acres, you need a split.
Acre, yeah, it's an acre and a half, so we got a split.
Okay. Is there any, we need the two entry, the two curb cuts?
Well, we figured um this is, the office people would probably be parked up there, customers and office people here at the Jersey Entrance Store. So we put an entrance and exit here, and this would be more for the vans and and shop vehicles, cause the overhead door would be here, so this is a little more of the industrial portion of it, more of the office portion here. And it is a three hundred and sixty five foot long parcel, so we thought the two curb cuts were, you know, appropriate. And the rest of it is is just, you know, basically all lot, the rest of it in there. We are putting um trees staggered, evergreens along the side, because there is a house over here, there's some houses around here. So it's a good buffer zone, and we're keeping the uh the overhead door and the more uh commercially side of this project away from this side. We do have a landscaping zone all on the front right here, and we have uh street trees all the way down, and then whatever vegetation, trees around there. Uh keeping as much as we can to this there.
I'm assuming you'll provide us with building elevations and all the rest of the jungle stables.
I'm sorry?
Building elevations.
The uh it's a two-story build, it's 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 basically seventeen feet, but it's thirty two feet from the peak of the building down down the grade on the outside.
So there are some elevations, I thought that there are some.
Yeah, we have elevations at the every shade. Yeah, this is the front entrance with with is gonna have this uh this signage over the door. Uh this is the office portion, office windows here. Uh this is, there's clear story windows here over in the shop area to let natural light in through there. The backside has no windows except for something in the office area. And then here's the only overhead door uh with a man door next to it on the end.
Can we go back to the site plan? I mean, one one site layout we've been advocating for is, we've been pushing parking up against the building and creating that really here, at least at least a little bit of a buffer against the property line. Did you look at the layout, kind of flopping parking towards up against the building rather? Because of the.
Well, if we moved the parking here, we'd obviously lose some spaces, I guess. And then you'd take your drive line and move it out to towards the street.
You would gain those spaces at the end of your.
Eric.
At the end of your driveway, if you flipped them, your driveway gets to kind of extend a little, so you could put more of the um perpendicular ones.
Yeah, that that can be done.
Yeah.
Sure. I just like to keep, usually like to keep the cars a little bit away from the building, cause the building presents itself a little better when you're in front of it looking at the landscaping and, you know, you you put parking along here, you really hide all that nice landscaping. Along the face of, face of the building.
So how about a sidewalk and the total, it's the entire sidewalk driving on parking.
Kind of answered my comment about with the beginning kind of more commercial side on the right side with the shop cars.
Yes, yeah.
I was looking at kind of just from a customer standpoint, walking from parking space in seemed a little awkward if you were over on the right side, having meetings on the left, we kind of answered my my concern. But I don't know if we can figure parking another way, we may get a little easier as far as the sidewalk and entrance.
Is that the appropriate number of parking spaces if you have electrical trucks that might be parked there and then you have employees that come?
I've got two, I have two vehicles that come back to the shop every day, delivery trucks, um service vans are taking all of it. The size of the building is kind of taken into, but I I can almost put everything I own inside, and it's safe, we can shut down a bit. Let's kind of lock that out, so that I can actually get all my stuff in the locker doors, something's gonna happen.
I think.
There's really there's four of us in the office and one truck driver. Service guys don't come to the shop every day, you know, it's like two or three times a week. Service guys don't come to the shop every day, you know, it's like two or three times a week, maybe they might stop in for ten minutes, customers. I think in the last eight years, I've had five, six customers actually come, you know, it's mostly, it's mostly us hanging out there on the.
Yeah, I think for your your parking calculation, did you use warehouse hundred fifty you got down?
Yeah, I think it go down here.
I think you're actually pretty liberal with that if we were gonna go by employees instead.
I went with the the office parking at uh one for hundred fifty square feet.
Okay, and industrial.
And then I went one for five hundred square feet for the uh for the warehouse industrial.
Because if we were counting it as warehouse, we would count by employees, right? So I think we were.
What happens in that space?
For the.
It's honestly uh storage for tools, leftover material, um you know, lighting, like the Tonsalina project, the lighting will probably get shipped here to our shop first, of the store until after ready, um there's no manufacturing per se. Very low.
It would go down now.
We can get some of the.
Place the place the.
Yeah, I think it'll apartment.
Is there a reason that you don't wanna tolerate a warehouse?
Part of it?
I'm just asking.
No, I, no, yeah, I.
Is it, is there a reason that you don't wanna consider in the warehouse as the designer?
No, not really, I mean, it's a shop, it's a shop area. It's the open shop area, he wants it mostly open.
Hey, when they need some of the parking up front, let it experience off the road, doesn't leak over to the commercial stuff.
Yeah, it's it's probably excess of parking for what he's gonna really use.
Yeah, that's fine, but you said you got four, four employees.
Yeah, we could take four.
Four to six, you know, I think sometimes guys want to go over.
Yeah, maybe you say that in the warehouse, you got four people, plus the the office is taken care of with the parking stalls, but you got four out four guys that maybe are in that warehouse space.
Yeah.
As if we're miscellaneous. So you got eighteen.
You think we should reduce the, reduce the paved area?
Yeah.
Take, okay, yeah, sign it.
Yeah.
Maybe just spots out there.
And put it in as warehouse in the description, so then we.
Right. Right.
Do the calculation for that.
Okay.
Unless you really want a lot of parking for some other reason.
Yeah. The only, the only thing I ask for is, we do get tractor trailers, so you know, lights, um.
Makes sense, I think.
Something, just enough room for him to be able to pull up, you know, because where we are right now, it's very tight, okay? To make tractor goes and now, and it's, you know, free a month, maybe, you know, it's not, it's not a constant thing, but it would be nice to pull in back to the warehouse.
Will you make sure that you show truck turn?
Okay, yeah.
About as soon as so that we can make sure that it's.
Radius, radius issue. Okay.
Hey, guys, it's Mark here.
Yeah.
Um, yes, I I just say uh, you know, the the a drainage report has been submitted, but what I'm seeing is there's over an acre disturbance here which would require a full swip for the speedies permit. Uh the grading plan doesn't show any existing grades. Uh what they're proposing is a detention basin only, which wouldn't meet the stormwater requirements for the speedies permit, so I I think there's some work that needs to be done on the stormwater here.
Yeah. You'll get full comments from Mark.
Yeah, yeah, Mark? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, uh this is with Terry, you know, Terry Horace is doing this, so I'll have her give you a call and you you can discuss it.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark, can you send the drainage stuff into the office, please, make us a copy of what you got?
Yes.
So I have a copy of the drainage report here if you want.
Yeah.
Josh, how much over there is there?
One and a half.
So ten part fixes, I'm sorry. I mean, the drainage being that.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I wanna finish this part of the conversation before I open up.
Yeah, Doug said the drainage may really impact the plan and where they have parking.
Resolution, so yeah, this is in, this is still in motion. Oh, yeah, I mean, this is concept, we wanted to see what they're intending here. Um, we'll have to look, obviously, at the building elevation, materials, low site.
It's like a low site behind it, I think, too.
You know, so there is work that'll need to be done, this is kind of first first look at it, we'll get some initial feedback to you.
Yeah.
Um, and then we'll kind of go from there.
Sure.
Are there any other questions from this board? I recognize there's a.
Incident.
President, uh, in the office?
Barbara, I'm gonna right across the street.
Okay.
If I may.
You may.
Can you bring up that?
You have about two minutes, I'll give you.
I'm gonna do my best. Can you bring up that schematic again real quick? One, the EAF has some discrepancies in it, and I've got it all in here. Bowers Industrial Park around it is a brownfield site. And I actually have a picture of the test well that was within a few yards of their southern property home. Um, up the other one. The first one here, yeah. So this entranceway here is directly across from our driveway. Already, we have people backing into our driveway to go across. If there's any, and this is a ditch, so that area is very small on both sides. The water tap is over here. If they move the building, flip it or something, put it over here so that they have a green area here, they can just go out maybe in one driveway. Um, this is Napoli. That's her house right there. Her septic's back there, and water goes back there, you go three feet down, you hit water. Some of this might sound repetitive from when I was here a couple weeks ago with the labor unit. I have the brownfield environmental from the DEC website. I also have the signed brownfield.
If that's for us, then.
That's one of the, yeah, I didn't have enough time.
To leave here and be aware.
I just wanted to let you know that there's a lot going on in this site.
Yep.
Stormwater, I was glad you brought it up, because when it rains, that ditch fills up to the top. You know, all goes down to uh fly road and into a green.
Yep.
Um, also, it's very wooden across from here, and there's trees already there for Mrs. Napoli's, she planted them. And there's other things, I'm sorry, I don't wanna take up your time.
No.
That's why I got this together, I'm not gonna get a picture.
Yeah, but I think this is, this is the first opportunity, we have to kind of take a little sampling on this one.
Right, and I understand it's a concept, and the town of the wet outside has a five-year plan that they wanna revitalize Tonsal Park.
Yep.
Would be a commercial approach, and I'm not against small business. My family has had a small business. But I can show you where the brownfield site is, where that property is, and he wants to build it.
Yeah, our our town engineer will.
Karen, can you help? Yeah. There is the picture. When they were filming the well. The green area is your property, and they're right behind it with the test well. And they're all over the sixty-four acre lot for PCVs. So if you put a retention basin back there, it could affect all of that as well.
Often to be considered.
Correct. I'm sorry to get this.
No, I think if you look at that with Eric, that would be.
Atlanta. And to be a little selfish in this area, I mean, it it's right directly across from our house. And the deal and everything we've had.
Is there a house, see this to the right?
Uh, no.
Right, left, left.
So this is.
Right, so to to the, to the right, what is, to the right?
That's yours right there. Napoli. That is, that's the house.
But she's she's concerned, like, her driveway's directly.
So this is.
There. What is to, what is, I see your house there, what is to the right, the blue square, you know, whatever.
That is the property next door to us that has a uh twenty-four by twelve.
There's a house right there.
Yeah.
Also.
A twenty-four by twelve one.
Shed, that's what that shed is.
Yeah, a shed. It's a blue shed. So there is another house in this, a house.
Correct.
Both sides of what the property is right.
There's some trees out.
This is Mrs. Napoli.
Three of them on the side of the street as well.
That's the house, that's the shed, this is our house. Right there would be that first driveway that they're proposing to go right back over here. Over here is where the water tap is, because the very first owners had it after Jim Bratsner. They wanted to build a house on there, and obviously industrial began. So then they flipped it, and it's been flipped like two or three times, because people wanted to build on it and they just couldn't. So this is my house, this is the house from the eighteen hundreds, but it's officially done, this is Mrs. Napoli, and that's Tom Sorbellows. This is all forest, that's Mrs. Napoli's trees, all the way over here. And then back here is Bauer Development, and there's test wells all over. You can't really tell too much, but you can see right here a little green. And on the other side of it, it's kind of brown, that's the ditch. There's been cars flipped in there, we even had a tractor trailer flipped on the side there, actually, it was right over here. So if they, if this does get approved to go forward, I would ask if the building could go over here. It won't affect Mrs. Napoli with her septic system, you've already got the water tap here. Try and work it out that way somehow.
So is everything self-industrial now?
Yep.
It wasn't when we bought our house.
Yeah.
It was agricultural in the residential variance, and then in the early nineties, it went to multi or jack height checker something, then it dove through.
Yep.
And I guess we're widely on septic, because there's.
All the houses of that, all time here were from the fifties and sixties.
Because there's a sewer running down the street.
There is a four sewer main on here and a gas line, because our gas line actually sprung a leak one year.
Okay.
The water is on the other side. Behind here, you got the gravity flow, Mrs. Napoli, five years ago hired a contractor, she wanted to hook up to the gravity flow. During the driest part of the summer, contractor went down three feet, he kept hitting water. There's an underground aquifer that goes from the wetlands here all the way over here. And that one big tree, that gorgeous tree there. Sorry, I can't help it.
Yeah.
But that's why it's so big and gorgeous, because its roots go into that aquifer.
Okay, I think we'll, I mean, much like labors will take all of this into consideration.
I appreciate it.
Uh we have all the information you provided, so thank you very much.
I was glad to hear, it's not gonna be a big.
No, it's.
But tractor trailers on Bachelor Road, I'm gonna be going to the town board and asking them to have just local delivery, because they're using it as a drive-through. And there's no shoulders to the road.
Right.
And it's ten foot right, and you try to get a tractor trailer in there, you're not gonna, my husband's a retired truck driver. There's just no way, they'd have to park right on Bachelor to offload.
Yeah, just to be, make sure you did it.
You don't think they'd be able to pull into the.
Not at all, no, nope.
Oh, because it's a steep slope.
You've got that ditch right there. And it runs the whole south side.
But we'd have to, I mean, you'd have to provide a drive-in with a.
Well, they have to build up their driveway to get it across it, yeah, and make it, yeah, exactly, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But show the truck attorney, prove that.
Yeah.
That works, you know?
Okay.
You don't wanna build something and find out it doesn't work, yeah, so it works.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, show the the ditch or drainage or whatever.
Right, yeah, and we need full survey of the.
I can. Okay.
Grades.
Oh, the lights, we're right over that airport, main runway, so you gotta be careful with lights.
The grays.
Good thing you said nutrition.
Exactly, which might have to.
He might have a standard art lights party out there. Be good to him, or he'll have a flame coming down your house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh any other further updated, okay, so you've heard kind of some initial comments, I would urge you to take all of this into consideration. Take a look at this, you know, provide an updated set, we'll look to get you to do a work session when it's appropriate.
Okay. Okay.
It sounds like, like the, it's a threshold issue with respect to the swip for Mark.
Right.
Yeah, I want to.
And our neighbor here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna talk with Mark Parrish closer around this too.
Yep. Or we, so once it's all kind of wired out, then we'll, you know, have a deeper conversation.
Yeah.
But if there is a large established tree, like she's saying, it would be great if you could maintain that, but it's pretty bare there, you know?
Yeah, um.
And the eagle and the osprey, I know it doesn't mean anything, but.
Yeah, originally, I I had thought of putting it on the other side, um, when that forces the door to, towards there, the residence that's there.
It is there.
And it's gonna be, not that it's super noisy, we're not running, you know, impact guns and everything, but there, you know, there's, there's gonna be.
Yeah, we we did, you know, we organized this building this way because there's a house.
There's gonna be one that's. Yeah, yeah.
And to say, keep it quiet, you know?
Yeah, we tried to put the offices up against their property line as well, you know?
Yeah.
Yep. To keep it just obviously quieter and um.
If you put the rock face in.
So I mean, it can be, the design can be sensitive.
Two ninety-eight.
Yep.
Yeah, then all you have is the backside, which would help prevent some of the noise too.
Okay. Okay.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Do triple A? Same thing, we've got a consummate, we're trying for this ten minutes. Do you have a site plan?
Yeah.
Site plan? Next time when you come in, if you have a jump drive, you need, there you go.
Do you have anything different issues?
The only thing I've got is what you've got colored up, everything else is the same.
Yes, we just.
If you want, I mean, if you go on the uh the plans. You scroll around.
Yeah, that's what I have up there.
Yeah. There you go.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I'm Joe Mastriati, I'm the engineer in this project. Uh, so the site, like we're saying, is Topac Road, Worleyburg, and triple A rents in the building. Currently, they rent also off-site, uh they have a lease on, I'm not sure where. Uh where they store their supplies and things like that, and release it when now, they want to bring it onsite, so they can go back and forth. And they talked to the owner, the owner, I think, probably. So this is the existing building that's here, they're in. Back here in the parking lot, it's all gravel and asphalt, and there is a concrete pad back there bigger than the building, slightly bigger than the building. And they're proposing to put the twenty-five by thirty-three foot of steel building there, which which we've got in prime. Uh for, put stuff in for the trucks, they're not gonna park in there or anything. Uh there will be electricity going through it, they'll be able to bring the trucks there, get inside, get the supplies, and then he's moving. So the trucks have the supplies. Uh it's not gonna be a servicing, like the analysis, just supplies to get for your trucks to go out in the road. Uh there'll be a light on the outside, will actually two lights, and that's the long short of this. I did bring material that would be used for it. This'll be the the outside walls, and this'll be the roof. See everything over to it.
And that's what's there now also?
Oh, no, it's not gonna.
There's a building there.
There's right here, right here, there's just a concrete pad.
Yeah, but what's the existing?
Oh, this? Okay, that that's like an off, which they run out.
It's, yeah.
What are the materials of that?
It's like the right concrete lot.
Black?
Lot, yeah, right.
Yeah.
The backside is a lot.
Front side.
Yeah. And this is just a out-of-utility building, so, well, we talked about this the other day, you know, from Topac, that if you look at the lower right corner of the existing building that's there, you got some trees that run across that space.
Okay.
Is, we're gonna ask for some additional screening, like, maybe in that space to block that view from Topac, or in there.
Come on.
In there, so that'll, that'll be part of that screening.
If I could directly put it, adding two foots there, or you want to?
Adding two foots there, right now, I mean, yeah, so there's a couple of trees right there, but yeah.
It's a power line gap though.
Uh, no.
Yeah, but you can set, you can set back.
Yeah, but I'm saying like back by the parking lot side of that. Yeah, I'm saying like back by the parking lot side of that.
Okay.
So they're probably pushed back, you go to the parking lot, so there's some screen parking, screen the building from beyond.
So you're looking like in the center here?
Yep, I have that there, okay, the survey I want to show the trees, these trees that are there, you know, it's in there.
In the gap slot, could you add a replica up to the gap slot there?
From Topath, that's from the side.
Yeah, that's really good.
Right, but you're taking it down, putting it in here. No, to the right, to the right of that tree, so go to the, go to the Topath. Here's the, there, there's the gap.
Wait, we gotta turn the corner, we have a big truck that's trying to.
But, oh, it was, the driver didn't go anywhere, there's. So then if you look down, just to the left of the, right of the building, see the gap, trees.
Yeah, you're talking about right here.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay.
Gas, the gap and trees that are in there, so it's wanting that view.
Okay.
Straight line shot in that pad.
Back. Is it, had you considered putting the shed though, like behind the building, right there?
Well, what they're doing is to save money, that's why they wanna put it on the concrete pad, there's already have them made a pad. But that'd be quite costly, the building be roughly the size of those rooms, twenty-five by thirty-three. Well, the pad is a little bit larger than that, so a chamber of fence there.
Okay. Right, on the side now.
Just a.
Close the gap. So the other thing that we will need to be addressed, just a bunch of gravel, parking trucks.
The roof on the pad, how about the color pattern, do you wanna match the existing building at all, or do you like the new color pattern?
I hope it's.
I'm just saying.
Looks like it's light that it's still.
I mean, I think it's.
I mean, if this is faithful to what you're providing, this will stick out like a sore thumb.
It's what is the.
Was that, oh, yeah.
It's that, yeah.
You did say that.
Yep.
That's the roof, the dark is the roof.
This is a roof.
How does the, how does that color compare to the existing building?
The existing building is a little bit lighter. Uh, it's like an off-white, it's not pure white, but it's a kind of off-white, this is a little bit darker.
With the charms. Yeah, it's, it looks like something, but it could be just the way they came and wore it out. It fades when.
Or something in the drive.
See, it's like down to pink there and white there, so.
If the desire is to change the color, that's totally okay.
No, I think we, we'd just like it to complement the building, it's got, it's part of the bigger site, right?
I mean, that's.
That's the same site.
Right, right, understood.
So, you got, kind of looks like bronze, roll out like garage doors on the side there, which is probably closer to that darker color that's.
Any sound?
Just, just paint it. Yeah. Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't know what we need to do with parking, right now, there's just trucks parked out on that gravel area in the back, that needs to be addressed. Um, in the back lot?
Yeah.
Yep. So I think it's, as far as count, it's okay.
I think in terms of count, but sure enough that back, that lot. Don't want a wild west situation.
Do you wanna touch on the parking lot, sure enough, that access on the front? The big apron, hundred thirty P A. Want to talk about maybe if they were gonna rework Topath or repave, yeah, I don't know, but that one is. Oh, it's also an active brown field. The adjacent site is, yeah.
Super plain, super plain, so.
Okay. That should just be noted and look at the, if that has any effect on you guys. Is there anything that we can do with the, that we're required to do with that? Front parking for me? No, I think it's just.
No, not.
Yeah. How do you get into that parking area in the front of the building?
It's all open to the road.
Yeah, well, open to the road, Topath's wide open back out.
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's, that can't, you gotta move that inner strength, flip to the other side. You can't back out, well, I mean, the right side would be good. Yeah, they were just being in, inward-facing drive aisle is what it.
Right.
And then you would close it off and landscape it on the Topath road, right, that's, that's, that's a.
Yeah.
They probably.
That's on. They, they, one of your fellow crews is still there.
Sounds like there might be a Tom Keating project through here in the near future, and maybe we can talk about closing down the access tunnel, controlling it.
Yeah. Make them aware that it's gonna be coming down the line, they're gonna, they're gonna probably be requested to participate, link up till that.
How do you manage to feel how far out?
Uh, Joe, ask me as soon as, later this summer or late this.
It's only gonna be this year.
Yeah, but cleaning up that entry, yeah.
Two entry points.
Yeah.
But there may be a press letter from.
Easy. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, you have a couple of things to update on the drawings?
Yep, we got the landscaping and looking at the possible brownfield section.
Yeah, and then look at the, the front entry there. Know that that's coming later this summer or early fall.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna, that parking situation front doesn't have any problem.
Put the gravel parking back on the trucks.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's gotta be cleaned up. They're just, they're not.
You've got, you've got gravel, you've got broken asphalt, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Trucks back in progress.
You know, I mean, they, they should be on structure parking. And parking on gravel lots or whatever.
People's truck. I'll address that with you.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Solvay. This again, this is two applications that are in front of us. One of them is for subdivision parcel of, of the Wegmans, over on Jane Street. And then the other application for the actual site, so we'll talk about both same.
They don't actually cover subdivision plan yet, this is very central to this point, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all. Would you introduce yourselves?
Yeah, uh, my name's Bill Murphy, uh, Space Architectural Studio, representing Solvay Bank. And, uh, yeah, we can Wegmans, uh, as our owner, Wegmans, speaking. Um, we put together a, uh, site plan, uh, application for you as well as a sketch plan of the, uh, parcel that would be created via a lease line. Uh, this lease line parcel, uh, would, uh, front onto the existing infrastructure created at the entry to the Wegmans. Uh, there's a.
Actually a possible one, so is there a difference in which is open line, you're not actually.
Well, they, they want separate tax parcels, so.
It is currently.
They want, they wanted to have separate tax parcels, that's what it is.
They're one. Okay, so that's where for.
For financing.
Yeah.
Right.
You said, I'm sorry, no, that's a problem.
Would be a lease.
So, uh, there's the, uh, existing, uh, parking area, three, three spots here, and this existing sidewalk comes in here. Um, we were looking to put an additional sidewalk all the way along the, uh, edge of the pavement. At present, this is all a flat grass, uh, site, very slowly slopes down, uh, to the, uh, hedge basins that run down this drive. This building that's here, this neighboring structure actually slopes away from that a little bit, so it's, it's kind of gathering and coming down this way. Um, the proposal is to, uh, position the building, um, you know, perpendicular to this, this parking. Uh, their lease, they, customers would be able to park here offsite, uh, or they could pull into this curb cut and access our parking here, um, with sidewalk to the front, more staff entry at that. Um, we then, I've also, uh, created a one-way drive-through. Um, looked at a couple of options for that one-way drive-through, created the drive-through window, uh, in the ATM. Um, and a couple of earlier options had customers walking from parking across the driveline at the drive-through. Um, we didn't really think that was a, a great solution. So, um, developed this plan that kind of keeps the traffic on the outside, filters parking in, walk into the building and vehicular traffic kind of stays, uh, outside of that pedestrian area for people accessing the inside of the branch. Um, it's a very small branch location, there are three teller windows shown, but only two would be active at a time. The, uh, third one is for lunch hour and employee break opportunities because of the drawer. Uh, they have to have a separate drawer when they, uh, have a break, so, uh, they don't share that money drawer. Um, there is, uh, two small offices as well as a, a small conference room, which could ultimately be another office at some point, but, uh, the intent is small conference room. Um, there is a bathroom indicated, break room, small mechanical space. Um, we do have some signage that we've requested, um, and, uh, kind of provided you with the details of those signs, um, a couple of building signs and then a monument sign. We do have utilities that run all around the site, uh, we'd imagine we'd work with the town engineer to figure out the best, uh, way to tie into those utilities, they, they definitely seem very available. Uh, there's, um, several easements that run across the site that can be seen on the survey. And, um, yeah, I can answer any questions the board may have or, um.
Do we have any issues with the drive-through on the roadside? Is there a front yard definition here issued?
That's.
Can't be in the front.
Well, that's the front yard actually is James Street.
Exactly, right, yeah.
So.
Then we have drive-through on James Street.
Is that the drive-through on James Street?
The drive-through's on the backside.
At present, the, uh, drive-through is, is shown here.
Front side.
West Manlis and James, public corner.
Yep, that's correct. Um, there, this stand of trees is pretty well established. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I really don't think that there would be, um, too much of a visual, uh, visual, uh, intrusion. That previous option I did mention, um, had the drive-through positioned here.
Right, doesn't cross it.
But then we have to cross it. Um, unfortunately, the sewer easement comes through here. And, and that's what pu- pushes things kind of, uh, it, it's been a puzzle to try to get it on here. Um, unfortunately, at this end, uh, trying to do the drive-through, it, it just kind of becomes tricky with the way the bank wants to be able to uh, see, uh, have their teller see the, the customer in the drive-through lane, that visual connection is a little bit important. The camera is, uh, able to be done, but it, it's a little nicer to actually see who you're talking to. Um, so we did study it a couple of different ways, definitely willing to keep working with the board to try to come up with a good solution.
Those are deciduous trees though, that's why you have them represented.
Yeah, and they are, they are.
Have you done full parking counts for both Wegmans and this parcel?
Uh, we need, our need, um, on our parcel, uh, we have not checked the, uh, current Wegmans count, so.
On your parcel, just those four?
Your mean, on your parcel, not the ones out front?
That's correct. Yeah, the ones out front are just available to us.
Gotcha.
To use and, and that's available, but.
So they're not a required share agreement, legal agreement, you have to have them, okay.
No, not. No, we just have access to use.
Why, why is it four, where did you come up with that count?
It's six, I think, six.
Yeah, uh, it's on a, a previous plan.
I got seven there, I think, I think seven spaces.
There are seven spaces, that's correct.
Based on square footage office?
Yes, uh, if you go back a couple of, uh, I'm gonna go back again, back one more. Um, rates, uh, where do we show it?
You don't want it to squint?
Off-street parking.
I was scrolling, I wasn't doing it, so.
I know it's on here, we started. Just sometimes easier a little bit.
You just need to put in.
But even if the, the building in the drive-through is.
Sorry? Yeah, a little bit for.
There's something by a cross you'd ask, or if they get a parking.
Yeah, the parking on your property, yeah, it's a time they can, they can work it from.
Just coming out, but that's their.
But it wouldn't.
But that's the second point is, could you, could you get the parts immediately terminated from Wegmans to park in front, then just.
Bottom four rows of, you know, where you're working.
You know, where you're working, back then, it was the track to the back.
Yes. Six spaces is what's required.
In there.
And we sent one for three hundred square feet of gross floor area for another commercial enterprise.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Business, so it's one, one fifty.
So that we.
Um, I don't know, we, we took.
Office for you one fifty.
You know, there's plenty of.
You know, other, other, other commercial enterprise. We took, other, other commercial enterprise. Um.
How would we define, how, how would we define banks?
That's why we took it as other commercial enterprise, that's where we felt it, it fit. Um, but, you know, we can happily adjust, but that, when we looked at the I guess descriptions.
It's just. So a lot of you can define, figure out exactly what bank or many is. You know, it's.
That was funny to find this missing thing, every time.
The little, yeah, the little. We don't have a parking defined for a bank establishment in the code, is that what you're saying?
Well, what it, what it defines is, um.
Business or other.
It's a call, it's a, it's a really out there.
Yeah.
Cause they're roaming. So you studied having the teller line at the inside adjacent to that Wegmans parking? Because we're, I think that it's against the code to have it at the outside, like it's, it's so prohibitive.
You know, you're sticking it to the back, it's actually the front yard, we're not, no law drives through the front yard.
Right. So I think you're gonna have to flip those, and that may solve, solve your parking and walking across the lanes also because you just have to put the parking adjacent to the building and have it, you know, it, it.
Yeah, it's a triangular lot, so as we push closer to the street, you can just put that.
Well, I think what we're suggesting is if, if there was a, a permanent parking easement with Wegmans
It's gonna flip flat.
For seven spots or whatever you need up in front, that could you then do that loop?
So you're saying maybe flipping?
Flip flop.
Yeah, flip flop back, you're.
Or, or, or.
And then where would the front door be?
Or could the, could the.
Well, you were saying those spots at Wegmans aren't required, so the front door will be right where you have it now.
Yeah.
Because you can put the parking if you want, it's your cute little picture.
I would love to see the picture, I just think we're putting the, um.
If you leave the door there, could you put the, the tellers on the right? So that you could just simply go up, see the curve that you got there, so the, the drive, no, the other side. If you came up this, your drive aisle is going counterclockwise, so if you come up that way and then your drive-through is on the left side or on the right side of the building right there, okay?
South, south of.
And then you get the parking, then you're not in the front yard, if you take permanent parking right along, then you don't need all the asphalt on the left side of the building anyway, you just gotta come up and around.
Code issue in the front yard.
When you get the apartment there, that way it pulls that drive aisle out of the front yard.
So the drive-through, the drive-through on this side is a, is a.
Okay, it keeps the door. It's, it's, it's not very, when we came in.
We can't even, we can't even get any of it.
Because it, okay. We, um, I can, I can definitely take that back to the bank, I mean, that was my initial read of it too, and, and why I tried to come up with a solution that wasn't that. Uh, this is what they wanted to try, so we'll, we'll rework a little bit and, and come back.
I guess, fine.
So you should definitely look at, I, and I think you could get from the codes office what the count is on the Wegmans parking. They might be overparked, if they are, they can give you a permanent easement for the parking, like for that site.
Okay. So, um, I'll work with that new codes office to, to get an handle on, but, um.
Yep, yep, I'll get a lot of them.
And, and what would be the, the next step for us, would we come back to this board with a new concept? Uh, once we've kind of edited those pieces out?
Have the work session or?
Yeah.
Just do a work session.
Are there. Do they come up with something that is, I mean, this isn't approvable in this form at all, so.
Yeah, no, I I I understand.
So, well, so we, yeah, so kind of.
Yeah, we can bring your concept back, yeah, that's.
And your concept, or but we're just saying, should we bring it to work session? You know, or put it in and.
I think it's too early until we can.
No, yeah, when he does, when he does the new concept, it could come to work session, that's up to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Let me look at it.
Okay, so we can get.
Firstly, do you guys deem it acceptable?
Personally, I love having a building that's triangle lot.
Yeah.
To help screen that view of the just a rock parking lot from Jane come.
Yeah. Yep.
James Street, so this is a lot.
How are you guys addressing drainage on site?
Um, well, there's a pretty significant storm sewer um, that I went out and actually looked at before coming tonight. Um, and there's several uh, basins and and collection points that all seem to go down uh, this uh, in this direction. Um, so that's definitely the way that these eighteen inch uh, pipes are all draining. And uh, my my feeling is that uh, this development probably had a SWIP uh, the Wegmans development. And this disturbance is so small, uh, we're well below uh, an acre of disturbance. I can't believe we'd really impact that that SWIP at all. Um, this is about three thirty thousand square feet lot, so we're we're not disturbing anywhere near um, enough. So um, you know, the the plan would be to tie into the existing storm sewers um, and storm sewer system that's already in place for this entire parcel.
Mark, are you still on?
Yeah, I guess I'd just say that um, you know, this is in Lake Creek and there is a requirement to, even if it's below an acre and it does not require a SWIP, it will require mitigation to uh, you know, provide the ten-year versus a hundred ten-year pre-development rate for the hundred-year post-development rate. So there there will need to be some mitigation facilities here uh, as it's new impervious area.
Okay, and I I mean, I think we have enough land to be able to accommodate some of those issues. Are there, is there a guideline or something for your mitigation that you'd like to see or?
There there is, uh, so whoever your engineer is who would be doing the storm water, have him contact me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We can also talk about some of um, some of the improvements that are shown in the landscaping stuff on the Wegmans parcel.
Um, these islands, yes, and that's where I've been to the lease.
Yeah. Okay, so is Wegmans also the applicant here or are they?
Uh, Wegmans is the owner and Salvage Banks the applicant.
So.
And in constructing the curb cut, we're gonna need to curb around those parking areas to protect the parking. So um, that's that's what the curb construction is. And then rather than just have the empty curb, they uh, Salvage Bank, so they would landscape those areas. Um, so that, I I think it's the right solution.
Yep.
If we need to figure out the semantics of it, um, we definitely can do that.
Do we need to get anything from Wegmans to give them permission for?
Well. They should assign the application as the owner, I don't, I haven't looked at the application, yes, so.
They do. Yeah, they have.
That's enough to come up?
It it is, it it is. And that, because they're going to continue to be the owner as well.
That's correct. And and the Salvation Army trailer has already been removed from the location.
Um, one other thing that came up is the signage, probably will need variances.
Yeah.
Um, right now, the only sign that's allowed, well, other than the monument sign, the only sign on the building that would be allowed is facing a road where you have access. So I think in this case, we would consider that James Street is totally in terms of the relationship and privacy. Um, so any other sign that's not facing James would require.
I think they submitted the, you know, the application.
Oh, okay.
I think you did for, or maybe for two.
Right, for two of the four.
Right, so I think you might need it for.
That's okay, I mean, we we got the number wrong, I apologize, cause um.
Yeah, so one of the next set of plans is.
Seven.
Excuse me, no.
Yeah.
But we.
Yeah, we have them all.
Sure.
And we mentioned out, um, C six, I believe, all the last two. Um, so it's, so yes, we can uh, update the number, so what what's required.
We have okay and better.
Your your cute little yards.
We have okay and better. That's better, I think.
Except the.
Yeah, the drive's got your.
Okay.
Yeah. But but the left, the building side.
Yeah.
Right side.
Oh, yeah, so flip it around.
I gotta just.
I gave you some sketches.
You get the idea, I think there's.
Yeah.
I'll 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 see your.
Any real. Thank you.
Have to get rid of all the.
Put the drive lane, yes, put the drive lane on that one though, um.
You can't, why can't you go in the other way?
Because then your passenger side is facing the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the ATM's gotta be on the the driver's side.
Yes, like that.
But there's also, you know, stacking aspect to it, like you gotta figure out, you're coming in this way, I need to stack a couple of cars.
Can you tell them always on the passenger side?
Yeah, no, there's.
So I think there's there's, I think it is a viable site, I think you can do something.
So like the sketch plan of the subdivision, we're we wanna keep working on this site. I think is what I'm hearing, there's nothing that says like the this subdivision isn't gonna happen.
No, no, I think that's, I think it's a good use for the site, I think it's a.
No, yeah.
I don't.
Figured it out, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just that it's a layout puzzle that you're working on.
Okay. Yeah, and we'll we'll figure that part out.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Okay.
So with, even though the Wegmans will continue to be the owner right now, when this is a subdivided par- parcel, it can technically be sold. So we'll need some cross easement, but if it'll be a declaration of easement that Wegmans gives itself for those pieces.
For the access.
Mm-hmm. And and if we end up doing a shit of parking.
And there's no way to just do a lease line parcel?
No.
Okay, so the only way to do a lease line parcel and a leasable parcel is through the subdivision.
Correct.
Okay.
But do they have to have any parking on their own parcel?
That's what we're trying to figure out.
If there was a agreement, like a long-term agreement.
Cause we have a permanent.
We have a permanent agreement.
Yeah.
Well, and as long as the Wegmans doesn't need the parking.
Right, and that's why we have the full count.
Right, we're conditional.
Yeah.
I know, it's actually like a point though, it's not just.
So we're gonna.
I think the best way to try to design it so that you don't.
It's access.
It's access.
To the entire parcel.
Have have the the parking be on our parcel.
Yeah.
Okay.
What did you say? It has to be on their parcel?
No, I see, the best work.
No, the best.
Best work. It should be a self self that it. Right, for permanent easement, you don't have to worry about it.
Way, yeah, man, it's. Yeah, it's incredible.
Right, there has to be a permanent. If someone like get the great idea of, oh, just sell it off, and then there's no.
Right.
Yeah.
There's no easements, so.
Now, if you got.
Easement is a like.
If you wanna do sketch plans and circulate them through a launch, you can get them to the board and take a look at them. You know, if you have an idea and let's see if it works, like.
I mean, it could be literally a sketch plan.
Yeah, no, I, I believe me, I understand, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't do that level of.
Yeah, no, well, I didn't know how far to take it for you guys, this is my first time in front of this board. So I I definitely just tried to uh, give you the full picture of what we're proposing here.
No, it's great.
Great, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last step, we got the, our writers, yeah, I'll reach out to you with.
Oh, your Eric, Eric?
Yep, 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 I'll piece that flash drive, okay?
Hey.
Yes, we do have someone online.
Hello.
He's not asleep?
Does help, I do a pillow or anything for those sketches.
Thank you.
Oh, I. Good friend. All right, uh.
So I know, yeah, I, um, Kelly, Kelly's attorney couldn't be on tonight. I had a conversation with correspondence. Can we pull up the plan? What I'd like to pull up is um, let me look at that real quick, um. Serving serving, I'm not sure what you're calling, look at that second one, I think that's the one. Yes, yes, so that that's that's going to understand what's going on here is that what you see called Lot Six is its own tax map parcel. What you see as Lot Seven is its own tax map parcel.
Yes.
I'm gonna explain a little bit more about it because it's real messed up and not not the fault of of the person who owns this prop- property. They um, they came in to get a pool permit and they and they were and they were given a pool permit. Then it became apparent that the law lines were messed up. So um, what you see as Lot Six is really not Lot Six, it's really part of Lot Six of the Redford Heights Section B subdivision. What you see as Lot Seven is actually part of Lot Six, the Redford subdivision and part of Lot Seven, because the the other part of Lot Seven over here, they're get divided off. We're talking in the seventies, almost seventy. But this sort of has perpetuated as a, just a bad dream, you know, for for that. So what we're going to um, fix, and I made some notes to send to um, the surveyor to properly label the tax map parcel and what they are. And then to properly lay label part of Lot Seven and part of Lot Six block, it's all gonna be one.
Where's the rest of Lot Six? To the right?
The rest of Lot Six is to the left. Actually.
To the left of Lot Seven.
Uh, is to the left of Lot Six.
Okay.
The real, the real original Lot Six.
Is where Lot Seven is?
Is part of Lot Seven, yeah.
But where's the rest of Lot Seven?
Over somebody else, over, yeah.
Somebody else.
So that's, the whole thing just kinda like shifted?
So what what happens in a lot of these subdivisions like this is they start building, right? And they just start, yeah, they just start building a lot, all of a sudden.
Yeah, it's a lot. What if you do the house is bent, bent?
Somebody wanted a bigger lot, so it moved over.
You get to a point where there's a sliver here, they stop over. And people just throw their hands up and say, well, right, it's an unbuiltable lot, but it kinda goes away, cause, right?
I mean, but but they keep, but they keep conveying it.
You know what I'm saying?
They need to adjust with the lot line adjustments.
Yes, correct.
They keep conveying it.
Yeah.
As if it's a a separate, it's a separate tax map parcel, which it never should have been, because it's not buildable in any way, so.
So how they sell it?
Yeah, it's a mess, because the surveyor was perpetuating the wrong labels, right?
Wrong to watch, yeah.
Yeah.
So that took, that took me a few minutes to figure out.
One or two minutes.
But I have to actually go to the tax maps and go to the tax maps. So. Yes, but it wasn't him, it wasn't him originally, it's like we go to different surveyors.
All right, so what what do we need to do on this, you know, what is the action that needs to be taken?
We're gonna, we're going, I'm gonna tell them what to do, I actually drew it, I'm gonna send it to them, so they can label it right. And then it's just just a simple subdivision, that we can act on the next time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the.
And the, so the lot lines to the left and the lot line to the right, not Lot Six or Seven, but the actual, those are real existing.
Correct.
And that that always takes, what happens, we're gonna take the two lots and we're gonna subdivide them.
That perimeter is there. Yes, yes, and then that little, that the um, the title block is not gonna say location survey, it's gonna say subdivision and it's gonna be part of Lot Six and part of Lot Seven, because that's what it really is. But we, but at that point, nobody's gonna care and it's gonna be a new tax map number. I want you to. We will get fixed it for all time, so when they sell. And and they provided a new perimeter description.
Do you pay the taxes on it now?
They they are, they the um, Mrs. Rose who's up there right now, they.
Okay.
So, there you have it. And then the, then their pool will be legal, because it'll all be on the same lot, because it's currently not legal, but it's on that lot.
Right, right.
Crossed to that one.
Right.
Um, Kelly, did you wanna say anything, or did I explain it?
I think you explained it far better than I could, so thank you for that summary.
Okay.
So when I send the send the notes off of how that needs to be fixed and and Hannick does that, we'll get you in for your for your basically what's a lot line adjustment, even though we don't call it, you know, we call it a simple subdivision. And uh, we should be able to act on that next time.
Yeah, so we're going to the public hearing.
Don't need a public hearing.
Say you can do a lot.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so you guys don't need, we just need to get you revised materials? We don't need to submit any additional forms to get on next month's agenda?
No, just the, just the map needs to be revised.
Okay, okay.
Um, and we can revise it in the next couple days, we'll have it on the next agenda, which is in two weeks.
Who's doing the map for her?
Hannick.
Yeah.
Hannick.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so if he can, if he can get on making the adjustments that Jamie's gonna provide him. And we can do it by next Thursday. If it could be in by next Thursday, then we can have you on for the next agenda meeting, which is in two weeks and get it taken care of.
Okay, I will make that request.
My question today, today's the deadline for the next agenda, what are our?
Okay. Oh, today is?
Today, so if we could do it early in the week, because we gotta get the agenda out on Friday. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so as early in the week next week.
We'll. And Thursday's the holiday. Somebody, oh my God, yeah, we're going crazy. February July, yeah. So somebody remind me to send those notes, I actually have them written, I just forgot. Yeah, if you get it by like Tuesday, that would be very screwy.
Okay. Yeah.
Yep.
I I think they'll be able to turn it around quickly, so I'll I'll work on that.
So what's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Feel free to call my office, so I don't forget, I'm gonna send myself an email and I'll remind myself to do it, please.
Okay, thank you, Jamie.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, that's all of our agenda, any old business, new business, anything anyone wants to discuss? Wyatt?
Motion to adjourn.
Not bad, not bad, oh, oh, you took your.
Okay. Kevin got first, you Kevin, Kevin, you got second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good, close the agenda, thank you.
Curbs in my.